Thank you, this is colleague and I think our viewers have to for the benefit of those who are at home, we have a detailed petition for the committee on supporting doctors and and there whenever they let, what is important for us to just give the brief of the petition. Doctor Engineer Dr. Olubadez Matheïs against Engineer Dr. Lucile Uribega here in Maghela Institute at UBS. Petition was late, petition management committee on behalf of the president of the senate. Doctor Olubadez wrote against the engineer Maghela Institute at UBS for by his no promotion to the rank of director by this institute in 2019 while he was still requalified. The required senate should look into the matter and hold this institute for promotion. Now, this particular petition has been submitted for over one year ago, over almost one year ago. But when I write to the petition, I invited the MD, also invited the EVC. Because for any promotion to have in an organization, even if it's the MD, the manager that is in charge. However, if the manager is to report to the board before it can be done, then we have to bring the board member. In this case, the EVC is a superior boss for the MD. And therefore, we believe that even this thing after the day's hearing, we can still resort to the protected dispute resolution. Why it appear to them that the committee deliberately delay justice? Hence, I will consult one of leaders in the senate. This thing is getting too long because of the three posts, composite, COVID-19, holiday. I can't read the EVC, I can't read the MD, and these people are complaining. So as a person, a person in Nigeria, we need to say, okay, let us sit today and hear from the the complainant at the petition. What is the justification for your petition? How have you been deprived of the right of promotion? So I take your Nigeria, then we'll have here with me from the, from the EVC. And then with my chairman, my vice chairman, who is there, so just bring me here. That will become this obvious thing through authority improvement. I say, why not? We have seen that many before, it has never happened. But for people to know that we in the senate do not just sit down here and do nothing. I have more, we have more than some petitions here. Petitions on the average comes to this committee on the EVC between 10:15. And these members of this committee are very busy members of the senate. And chairman cannot be sitting alone and be taking decision. I took for time when some of my members would be available so that we can go today, you know, work together to see that we do justice to most of this petition. So I have to know that the, the head of today is being, you know, arranged. And thank God, I want to thank the EVC that in view of his loaded responsibility, is able to honor our invitation. So over to you, Mr. Petitioner, briefly state your petition. And we have the details already. There will help me request from your bosses on how to resolve this matter as much as possible.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Other members of the senate, committee, elected parties and public petitions. All of that, the court, the law. I am Engineer Dr. Olubadez, Sumathe, Euphrates Director, General Executive Services in the National Maghela Institute at UBS. I am here to present and defend my petition on promotion for 2019. Already have submitted my reports. Because of the shortness of time, I want to do its number. The title of the petition is partially clear for intervention in the hand of Engineer Dr. Lucile Uribaga. Managing Director, Chief Executive, National Maghela Department of Research at UBS. I have with me here my witness in person of Mr. Adewo Owedevi. Already in the report I submitted, I have the following particulars and documents on this matter. I have the date of my first appointment, 1st August 1996, and a shot A. The appointment was confirmed on 7th March 2000, and a shot B. And the date of my last promotion is 17th October 2013, which is a shot C. My PhD certificate was received on 36th June 2018, and a shot D. I'm going to write a letter on recognition of my PhD on 6th July 2018, and a shot E. Letter of inquiry on 2019 senior staff promotion exercise.
And totally, nothing, you said you failed the exam. Totally, that is still on, it is still on, not give for the first life. At that point, why would I fail the exam? Can I tell you a couple of my ass scripts? I don't think we will know is that the board just have been done, why not? But we are the senior members, we are, we are safe borders in this country and we are here. Who will allow some of our colleagues to ask questions, then possibly we will find a way to resolve this matter. Because if you are not qualified for everything, by the time you should be qualified. And if you didn't pass the exam, you are not qualified by God, you will pass the exam. But that's left for all of us to decide here, based on document before us. Then further, I want to ask you questions. What is the pass mark over 60? For somebody to schedule to, to pass, what is the pass mark?
At a certain time, the panel, that is the promotion committee, decides what is the pass mark. Based on performance and the general performance of the candidates. At that exam, the first one that was taken was 60.
60 or 100?
Yes, over 100. 60%. Has, yes, 60%, yes. I also want to say that the issue of omitting his name from the promotion list, if he was not shortlisted, you will not even allow to enter the hall. Not only that, his assessment will see several months before the actual promotion exercise. Of course, there are methods of disseminating information through the, to all those that I do. Institutions are informed through many social media channels. Apart from formal letters to the institute, to the notice board, that promotion exercises are socially informed.
I think, I think Chairman, we have to honestly, you know, this is my, this is my submission anyway. I think, Doctor, you have got to carry the weight in this matter. Because if I were you, if I suspect a poor play between my experience, what I would do is to make sure that I drag them to the point that I will hang them. If you suspect any poor play, I would have expected that you, you have to establish an alibi so that you can be able to be identified for us to make. If you suspect, you are suspecting, you know, it's a way you do it. You write the formal letter, you complain, you do all the necessary thing before coming to here. We would not, as a matter of fact, as a senate, we would not encourage this kind of issues. Because if we do, we will have, we will not be working anymore, we will just be listening to petition. Anybody who wake up on the left side of the grid and feel that Spriyo doesn't like him, oh, they are not in good time when you write a petition. Because for me, you should have exhausted all the mechanism, the internal mechanism within your system, which you do not exploit. If you do, we want to help that. And like I said earlier on, for me, if I have any issue with my chairman, I will hang him. So that I will have the evidence before the committee, I can be able to prove my allegation against him. In this case, we don't have this. By, the last question I'm going to ask now is, the EVC claims that as of the time when you receive your PhD result, you are not qualified for the, to stand, to stand for the exam. Are you contesting that? Are you contesting that, yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Which I read from the public service.
But you said, you, you, I, I, I asked you when you say or, no, you say and. So it could be either way, and you are not the one to determine which way it goes. So in that case, you don't have a case? You don't have a case, you can ask lawyers. If I give you two alternative, I say I'm going to deploy this mechanism to do and all, all this, and I decided to do this, you can challenge me that I didn't take the other alternative, can you?
No.
Touch the information, sir.
Right. Sorry, I don't know from where it's reading. I have attached copies of the rules to the document I submitted to you. That is after this one.
Are you reading it, sir?
Yes. Effective date of promotion, that is the heading. It's in page 2 of this document, guideline for promotion, and this 3. He says, effective date of all promotions shall be 1st January following the promotion exercise. So before 1st January, all qualification, all that you need to qualify you to be promoted should come from that January. Because your effective date of promotion will be from January of that year. So if you get your qualification in March as he did, you can't be promoted from January. But until next January, there is no any alternative translation in this year.
No, 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 sir. I mean, he wrote, that you, the single chairman, it's not my turn yet, you know, where the chairman, my friend, I will talk, but just to put it clarified. What you just wrote, EVC, does not take away from what he read. You have said effective date, that is when somebody becomes eligible to be promoted. It takes effect, I mean, January of every year. However, what he was quoting from civil service rules was what a social supervisor who says, yes, either January of the year or any other time. Because the only disagreement that we have did on that is that he is not the one to determine, you know, which one, whether it's the January rule or the any other time, you know, as per the condition. Yeah, that is the only thing. So I just wanted us for the record to kind of understand that we are on the same page. That yes, I mean, if you submitted this PhD result after January, for that year, it couldn't be considered. Except the management chose to apply the other rule.
The Crown Committee of Nigeria has issued a circular that they commented and directed that all promotions are effective from January of the year. So there's, they, he might have written some old civil service rule or something. I don't have that, that he submitted. But I have circular that supported this, and this is the current guideline. And it is what we have been using for over 10 years.
So, so where are you looking?
And that has been the practice of this institution.
Public service use 2018. You're better for your official business. Oh, 2018? 2019. 2019? 2014. 2014. Okay, was, was that full after that?
I know, I'm not aware of that. And that's not what we're using. In any case, there is no separate heuristic for him and it's different for others that is uniform.
Like the witness, sorry, you gave us this transcript. Yes, what is the score, what is the score on this transcript?
The score of this transcript is 88.7 over 60. The original is here.
Okay, is that 64%?
That is 88 over 60. Yeah, the 14%, the 14% are of the order and the assessment. But the exam, the exam is 60.
There are other categories. Senority is 10%. Upper, upper form is 20%, which was completely. So up to now, if not added on upper form, it was 10%. And the asylum qualification is 10%. And that is what is in the guidelines for advancement, promotion and this. And seniority is 10%. These are all the things that are put together that come to overall marks.
Yeah, but you said they are not you to know, of course.
So, this is what, this is what is being used, sir. This is what is being used, these are the culminating.
No, no. Well, I am a family. I will stay here, yes. I was this point. I was, well, I was targeted. But when I listen, the EVC, from a historical, I try to find the impression that this is maybe the petitioner, and there is no process or in a correct. I would have just said, I would have left the situation where if we, if we said or noticed some infringement on his part or somebody viewed against him personally, we would have thought it would be so that the process always should be seen up, the evidence, or somebody tried and called, tried the petition like this. Generally, in this world, or whatever we find ourselves, we need to follow a process and recognize some leadership positions. And if you find that for all those reasons, people are against you, you made a position known, and they have a document that you complained. I don't see a complaint, even though I was not, at a point like this, you can communicate and say, this happened, I complained, this happened, I complained. But before they are coming to work, if you must have not provided to show that you have shown your weakness over time. And the EVC says here that from what they have seen of you, that people at the town, they connect, their current boss is visiting, that you are supposed to take over, but from what they have displayed, it's not possible that we do that. You see, you are young man, drop him off. And I want a situation where I can do the very monsters of your activities. When I was the minister of education, then until the one starts, there are procedures in, according to five times first of the university. And then we will have the criteria, age, qualifications, administration, and a lot of other factors. At the end of the day, three days, the three highest position will be scored by the committee and given to the minister. As a minister, I don't have power to appoint, I will back to the, to Mr. President. Then I have the right to say, if you go to Mr. A, in the first position, I'm the commander number three, to the five tasks, and I give reasons. And only I thought that, because our president will just endorse it. What I'm trying to say here that, it is not about, about your score. Character matters. And the sooner we, we, we relate that to this country, the better for us. What if I talk about your score 90% or 100%? Because you are not going to be administered some people, you will be people who have done that you. So I'm just advising, but we should not just be, but young men, who are here. We have to be very cautious of where we go, you know, we take our chance.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I just want to, the guideline, which, which here? 2014, I have another one in 2014 there. Can you, do you have mention?
This is, this is the full booklet that I have.
Okay, in December, 2014. Okay, what the rule says is effective date of promotion. This is, this is guidelines for appointment, promotion and discipline. Revised, revised August 2014, is that the same one that we are, we are on? Is that the same one? Okay, this is what for me. Okay, I read section 21.
Declaration of cover.
21?
No reporting of Sasha, reporting.
No, no, no. The which means, we are not, effective date of promotion.
The one you are reading.
Effective date, effective date of promotion, of all promotions shall be 1st January following the promotion exercise.
Now, you want to, are you still contesting that? This, you are reading from your own guideline?
So, yes, I agree, sir.
Right.
What, what, what I'm saying is, sir. Number one, the, the ass script begin to lose, have not cited it. And impossible, I would like an independent person to share with, I'm happy because I cannot, I cannot.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, that's what you should have done before you come here.
Sir, sir, I wrote you the letter.
You should have, you should have, you have the right, excuse me, you said, the EVC now said you had right to petition and even call for the remarking of your script, which is the best fair deal any worker can get for this agreement. If I have the right to call for my script for remarking, that is what the EVC has said, you have filled layers, often layers to explore it. The, 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 you are, you are right, to exercise your right that is given to you from the system, that is your internal mechanism. We just jump to the center of the federal.
It's not like that, sir. I wrote a letter of inquiry to him, there was no any reply.
Can we have a copy of the letter, you have?
Yes, it's inside the report that I submitted. That for 2018.
Can I have a copy by here?
That is manager F. No response up to this.
Manager what?
Manager F.
F?
Yes. And it was a hundred.
16 hours, 2019, 15 of August 2019.
And the examination took place 28th August 2019. I wrote.
EVC, why didn't you respond to this, this letter of inquiry?
He wrote 2015 August, that is before the exam.
It's not before the exam.
The exam took place on 21st, 23rd of August. So he is writing to say his name was omitted. And his name was not omitted, and he was permitted to write the exam. That letter did not say he is disputing, he failed exam. That one is not saying he has failed exam.
Doctor, you are misleading us here. Because if we ask you, as we see, you give another.
No, sir, you said, you said.
From the letter you wrote here, yeah, that's what you, you are asking. You are not contesting your, your result, script. You see, I honestly, me, I still tend to do a case. But the only thing is that you actually did not exploit the right to handle being able to make a watertight case for us to support you to get the approval.
This is me, Chairman, and civil people. Engineer Olubadez. You are before the senate committee. Very well, you are not before, it was in front of law. I will tell you as a lawyer, at this point, if the judges are putting her together like we are doing, they should be talking about the possibility of striking out your case. At this point, rely on your own evidence. Failure to explore, in chat, available internal mechanisms. You know, your attempt to personalize the issues, your obvious attempt to even mislead the committee, in which case if you have been the court, and then they will accuse you of having wasted the precious time of the court. But who would not do that here, where in the territory, you have the right to come here. So we can never say you have come to waste our time, it's part of why we are here. However, it's important that I recommend it, but I do not sit here and allow any institution or government to be messed up. On the other hand, we will not sit here and allow any of the government institutions to also oppress our own people. That is the job of the ombudsman that we are here to do, to strike our balance. And the single chairman and the single chairman, I would like to make a comment. Rely on clause 21 of the civil service rule, copy also quoted by both the petitioner and the EVC. This is 2020, meaning that for this year, another one, another opportunity at the whole of 2020, as of the 1st of January 2020. Correct, EVC, good. The petitioner is here. The essence of my own appeal would be to ensure that we do not take a decision here today that will make them walk out of this place. With one thinking, I am the victim, and the other one thinking, I'm the victim. I don't want Engineer Olubadez to think over, I took them to the city, I use all my connection or whatever, I defeated them. And which will make it still difficult for him and for them to work together. On the other hand, I don't want EVC leading the management, MD and the other people to also think, you took us to the city, you followed them there, and then you're there. Now let's see what it wants. I would be making a very passionate appeal that we allow for a longer journey. Let's take down this matter. One, let Engineer Olubadez go back and make peace with the board and management of this institution. If he has something to offer, he has enough, he has worked so hard, he has built a career in this institution. And they are in the EVC, you also show that, I mean, there is nothing like marriage. If he was one of the marriages, he will not open his statement by saying Engineer Olubadez.